Good evening. Welcome to Board of Trustees meeting for Grand Lake Township for Tuesday, August 9th. Could all rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Robertson, would you care to call the roll, please?
Certainly. Trustee Hugo.
Here.
Trustee Fike.
Here.
Trustee Raridan.
Here.
Trustee White.
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Here.
Myself, of course, I'm here. Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Seven members present. A quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Ms. Hugo.
By Hugo.
Support by Mr. Fike.
Supported by Fike. Trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comment. Seeing no public comment, we will bring it back here to the board, and I'll seek approval for the consent agenda if somebody'd care to. Dr. Raridan makes that motion, supported by Trustee White.
Trustee White is support on consent agenda. Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett.
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, on to old business. We have our strategic plan update and amendments. We spent some considerable time last week or week and a half ago going through our strategic plan and took a tour of some of the facilities throughout the township, everywhere from our bicentennial park to one of our pump stations for water. Took a look at some new development out on Balden Road, the Balden Road project, and it was very, I think everybody found to be very helpful to take that tour, to look at what projects we have going on and what needs we have. So we met afterwards briefly and went through the strategic plan, and I know gave everybody an opportunity to kind of stick sticky notes on the boards to see what you think may have been accomplished and what we may need to focus on. And we have before us an update, I think, that Ms. Roberts put together summarizing our comments. Mr. Limina?
Yeah, so, and I see it typed on it already since it was, I was typing it moments ago. The, what we tried to do is, you know, the strategic plan is a living, breathing document, and it continues to evolve as we continue to work through it. We were, this was a really good work session regarding this thing, and I really appreciate the feedback. I think that tour helped all of us to be able to really kind of coalesce around some of the ideas of the things that we're working on, the things that you're being asked to spend money on, get a chance to see those. So we tried to recap that. This will actually become part of our strategic plan. It just keeps building on itself. So from our initial document, if we add this to it, we'll update it online. Anybody, whoever wants to go see our strategic plan, they'll be able to chronologically walk through all of the steps that this board has taken to develop the strategic plan, to identify the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, to picking your goals, and then our action items that represent those. So I tried to recap just, you know, where we were, so as we go back and people look at our strategic plan, that they get an opportunity to see what we did on that tour, why it was important, recap the current mission statement in there. You know, a plan to progressive community, which provides a safe, caring, and quality environment, and should live, work, and play. I think that the consensus of the meeting was to spend some time at future meetings to consider updating the mission and maybe to consider adding a vision statement as well. I think that we can spend some time at board meetings briefly, once we get some different examples and grab some, like, what's important, what are we trying to convey, who we are, what we do, and who we do it for, is basically the thought behind it. Then the strategic plan review, you know, we spent the time going through the SWOT analysis. It was gratifying to note, in fact, I think it was Clerk Robertson who made a point of saying that a considerable amount of the weaknesses had moved to either strengths or opportunities from what used to be weaknesses, and I think that's just an indication of, we identified it, we built goals around it, and we worked towards removing them. Amazing what you can accomplish in just one year's time with a little focused efforts. I think that the major goals, when they were reviewed for relevance, progress, and next steps, we captured all of the comments from the post-it notes that you guys put up. And then Executive Coordinator Melissa Roberts was able to grab those and throw those into the grids. So as you look through the grids that were included now in the update, everything in blue came about from the work session, and it just highlights some of the thoughts as we move forward. Some of those might be strategic actions or action items. You know, we didn't really change any of the goals, and it appeared that the consensus is that the major goal areas that we had chosen continue to be worthwhile to pursue. We're not there yet. We're not done. So I appreciated that. As we move forward, we'll go back now. We, you did the six-month review in January. This was the one-year review. It will get reviewed again in January of 2023. We go through the entire packet again to make sure that we're still on track, but in the meantime, we'll start to update it every two weeks. We'll pick goal areas that are important to upgrade. Board can always ask for whichever one they want to see at any given meeting. Otherwise, we'll just continue to kind of round robin through them to provide the board updates on probably two of the major goal areas every two weeks.
Any thoughts, concerns?
The only thing I want to make sure we keep is the phrase "progressive community." Thought, you know, as, you know.
All right.
Don't care.
He only says that because he knows it had.
I did, and Dennis owes me $14.
I get it. That's the one part we're going to change.
As you can see, there's a lot of unity around the mission statement.
Or the language.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll take a look at that, and, yeah, take a look at some other municipalities around the country and see what they might have for their mission statement, right? All right, thanks for helping us focus on that, Mr. Limina, and keeping that in front of us. I think one of the reasons why our board has been able to move on many of these things is because we're staying focused on this, and we have a plan. So I think the branding is probably the most visible thing that we've seen, but the other ones are making a huge difference as well, so. Okay, next on the agenda is our ARPA funding, ARPA funding update. Mr. Limina?
In your packet, and this is something that, again, Melissa Roberts is keeping track of for us so that we stay on track with where we are. Again, $3.9 million is received to date through the ARPA funds, and we're going to continue to just provide updates so that you can see total funding spent and what we're working on. Again, at this point, the board has authorized the expenditures on the maintenance barn out at the park. You were all able to see the opportunity of what that looks like and whether that was a good spend. Total of $95,000 spent to date. A lot of that would have been much more expensive had we not been able to do a lot of that work in-house, if we had to send it all out for contractors. So I think that was a very wise spend, and again, the employees out there are certainly appreciative, or they will be even more appreciative this winter when they're, actually have heat in the barn that they work in throughout the cold months. The high-speed ballot scanner, I think Clerk Robertson can speak to the success of that.
Yes, it was a great success. It not only processed ballots rapidly, but it provided ease of observation for those that required observation. We had the, I got numerous comments from our election inspectors that were working the absentee voter counterboard that it worked very, very well. I'm very pleased to report that, I believe, we had a total of, ultimately, of approximately 5,900 absentee ballots that were cast in the, in the August 2nd election, and obviously, we expect a considerably larger, considerably larger number in November, and it's good to know that this has been able to work so nicely. Keep in mind that of the $98,875, $25,000 of that was a grant from the state that cut that cost to the township by that amount. It was a ballot security grant, and I think it was well worth the investment, and I thank the board once again for its support in providing for it. It also allowed us to move the absentee voter counterboard from the high school to this bill, this room here, which made for ease of administration on Election Day, since Lynn and I were just across the hall. And that saved us some cost with regard to DPS, because they were not having to move things back and forth from there to here. So it was, we saved a few dollars there, as was expected and was projected at the time the request was made for the expenditure. So there you go. How's that?
And really, you know, I don't know how late they would have been here counting those otherwise, but.
Yes.
They've been here until 2:00 in the morning in the past.
That's correct. That's correct. Three or four, actually, in 2020. I don't expect it will be that late this time.
Right.
And I'm encouraged by what I saw.
ARPA-funded projects include fire station number two's renovation. We had projected it at $749,000. The bids haven't gone out yet, but like I explained when we were on the work session tour, I think that that's probably, numbers low. I think it's going to come in higher in that, just based upon where projects are coming in these days. But you got an opportunity to see what we can do, and again, I just want to shout out to Chief Burdette, that Deputy Chief Miracle shared with us, that on the south end, having that staffed in shifts one and two, we've cut like three minutes from response times. Fire doubles in size every 30 seconds, he shared with us. So that tells you just how critical and important it can be to us to have, you know, those fire stations ready, and we'll be prepared to man it 24/7 in the future when this project is done. We had the pedestrian bridge out at Parks and Recreation. The engineering's been done, hasn't been recorded in here as of yet, so I'm guessing we haven't paid those bills. And then the water project in Monday, which we ultimately did not choose to be a part of, but we had authorized, or the board had authorized us to do the engineering, and that was $27,000. So out of 3.9 million, we still have some way to go. I think that, again, we've discussed using it potentially as retention in the future for contract negotiations, but we expect that we'll have that thing fully booked out, regardless of what happens, and have those projects before the board no later than the beginning of 2023.
Any questions, concerns? Okay. Under new business, personal property tax collection. One of the items that we are taxed, tasked with as a board, and especially our treasurer is with the personal property tax collection, and while the states made significant changes in what's exempt and what isn't over the past couple of years, and even some more changes coming, I'll let Mr. Limina talk a little bit about our history with that and our thoughts on, have a little bit of discussion on where we want to go with it.
Sure. I mean, personal property tax, there's only a couple of states in all the nation that charge that, and it was pretty controversial. The legislature looked at it a few years back and said, "We need to phase this out to make us more competitive in a business environment if you want to attract business to your state." Tough part for us being on, you know, on the local end of it, is that we see our personal property tax revenue go away, and it started with a threshold a few years ago. They put the threshold at $80,000 if you had equipment that had a value of $80,000 or less, then you had to still file the form every year. Now it changed where you only have to file it once, and once you've determined that it's under the threshold, you never have to file it again. But we gave up, as local municipalities, the ability to put a tax on that personal property below $80,000. January 1st, that threshold will now move to $180,000, part of the planned phase out of personal property tax, again, the state of Michigan. So you'll see that adjustment go up, and that will make, again, they'll file a form one time showing that they don't have personal property, you know, below that threshold or above that threshold, and they'll no longer have to pay personal property on it. Regardless of how you feel about it, whether it's good or bad for business, you know, part of it, when you think about personal property tax, so a landscaping company has their equipment and bulldozers and things like that, those things, even though they can be moved and, you know, are they residing in Grand Lake Township, but what if they also have an auxiliary place in Monday Township or something? Well, we have to figure out where they're headquartered at and where they own that equipment, and then we ask them to self-fulfill the, fill out the form and explain to us that we own this personal property, this is how much it's worth, and then we tax them accordingly. The treasurer is charged with making sure we collect personal property. If you can't collect it over a five-year period of time, after five years, you can write it off, and we do so every year, five-year-old personal property taxes that are deemed uncollectible. Once you've deemed it uncollectible, then you can write it off. So going through our process of how it's worked, there's a couple of best practices, I think, that were highlighted in this, and I think Deputy Treasurer Stillson has done an amazing job of going back through and really pulling up a lot of the data and details, and we've had conversations with her between Supervisor Bennett, Treasurer Kilmer, myself, really looking at, is there best practices that we could do to improve our success in collecting more of this that gets written off? Last year would have been for 2014s, I think, and that was about $71,000. Nancy, does that ring a bell? Does that sound correct?
2015.
2015s?
Without interest or penalties.
Yeah, without interest or penalties, just the actual uncollected tax. So you hear that number, and it sounds like a lot of money we left on the table. What we want to have a conversation with so the board fully understands it, some of it is truly deemed uncollectible. It would be things like mobile home parks. Mobile homes are not taxed as a permanent appurtenance on the property, because theoretically, you can hook up a truck and drive it to the next park, but decks, porches, sheds, those things are, and they become personal property tax. So a lot of those are small amounts. Those people are more transient, they're gone. A lot of it's hard to collect. But there's other ones that are medical offices and things like that, that tax due to the township could be a couple thousand dollars or $4,000. Those ones, perhaps we need to be a little more aggressive at. I know Attorney Laddie has worked, you know, other municipalities and looked at ways to collect it. I think that'd be a great place for the board to start, as far as setting a threshold of, you know, once it's uncollectible, how aggressive we're going to be, what threshold we're willing to go after, whether that makes sense. Again, some of them just never filed the form. Well, if they don't file the form, we don't know that it's, you know, less than $80,000. So they could have filed the form and not even know the tax, but the fact that they didn't file the form makes the tax due unpayable. If they don't file the form, we have to estimate it. You know, the treasurer can't, statutorily, he's required to collect this. Our assessors are required to assess a value. If you don't work with us and share the information, we're required to make a educated guesstimate on how much your personal property valuation is, and then the treasurer has to collect that. So they could come in and file the form four years later and say, "Well, look, I only have $20,000 worth of personal property. In the meantime, all those ones that are in arrears, that didn't make those go away. It only goes away moving forward, so we're still carrying it on our books." Do we still pursue it? Well, statutorily, we don't know how much personal property valuation they had in those prior years, so that's, we have to collect it. We have to make every attempt to collect it, because we just don't know. It can be, you can be aggressive. There's, you know, a few years ago, there was a nearby municipality where the treasurer went out and chained the front doors of the restaurant and said, "This will be available at a tax sale until we get our money recouped." And of course, then the owners came down and paid their overdue tax the following day. We had a former treasurer here who went into a business and started removing the wall, pictures off the wall. We had to sell them for the tax sale so that we could recoup. I don't recommend those aggressive tactics. I suppose they can be effective, but maybe a little bit dangerous, too, and we might have to have a police escort if, Mark, if you're going to start ahead.
Yeah, I'm really not in favor of getting shot here.
So David, question on, so if we set the threshold, let's say, at $250 that are higher, and, you know, we've sent several letters, let's say, at this point, and still have deemed it, you know, that we should collect it. There's a cost to us going to court, and is that small claims, or how do we do that?
No, it would be in the district court, but it'd be in the ordinary civil division of the district court. And for, trying to remember off the top of my head, I think complaints that involve dollar amounts less than $5,000 is maybe $60 or $65. Then there's a service fee. We have to personally serve that complaint, and we've got that done in the past for maybe $30 or $40. So your hard costs are right around $100.
Okay.
So that, I would suggest, and then, and then there are also additional costs that you could potentially have as well.
Sure.
So I would, I think $250 is probably a pretty good lower, that would be the floor, basically, for chasing these accounts. And then, again, that's at the stage where you get a judgment, and then, and very often, there isn't a lot of defense to these cases, once you've proven that they didn't, either didn't file or just haven't paid. And then if you end up with a judgment, you want to be able to collect on that judgment. You just, you don't want a piece of paper that's got a number on it that doesn't mean anything. So there's a little bit of work sometimes that comes after a judgment. But in other communities, we've been, we've been very economically efficient. In fact, we set our, we set a goal offsetting costs, and we didn't want our costs to exceed 25% of our goal, and we were able to reach that. So that is a better way to go if you choose to get a little more aggressive about collecting. I agree with Superintendent Limina and Treasurer Kilmer. It's a little drastic to go pulling things out of buildings.
Right.
So that's an alternative if you want to pursue it.
Sure. Yes, Mr. Fike?
There were a lot of numbers there, Dennis. Reiterate. We're at 80, and we're going to how much, did you say?
So it's at $80,000 now. The threshold will move to $180,000 for 2023.
So the net effect is lowering their taxes that they'd have to pay?
Sure. The idea is that we're going to phase out personal property tax completely one day. And in this phased approach is that, you know, that'll jump up to $180,000. So for a lot of smaller, you know, businesses, firms that, they might, just their office equipment, things like that, it all adds up, and they're paying taxes because they're above that $80,000 threshold, this is going to take that personal property tax burden off of their tax bill.
Do we vote on that?
On the personal property tax?
Nope. It's a.
Statute.
Yep.
Because we wanted to be able to say, "Sir, we lowered your property taxes, or we lowered your taxes."
We could claim clerk credit for the.
No, 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 that's the legislature.
I think you'll have a few legislators jumping in front of you, though.
It's one of the things that you should know, though, personal property tax is part of your revenue stream in the year 2022 fiscal year budget. That's $370,000 worth of revenue in personal property tax that is going away as we move towards eliminating this, while, you know, hopefully it makes us more business competitive with surrounding states. That means more people want to come and locate their businesses here, and brings our taxable value up that way. But $370,000, if I had to cut that out of your budget right now, I mean, that's a pretty big chunk of money.
Yeah. Hopefully, there's some revenue replacement for it.
It was built into the law. You can argue whether or not it was enough, but.
I don't want, I never want to argue with the people who employ me.
That ship has sailed.
Yes.
So there's an exemption for, you know, going to be $180,000. Yeah, we're only one of two states, you know, I think, in the country that have a property tax, and people argue that it does, you know, it is anti-business development. But our budget is based on, you know, collecting that, and I think, you know, our residents depend on us to follow and to collect on taxes that we put out there. And to write, just simply write them off when they decide not to pay them, I'm not sure is right either. I know it isn't. And so we need to have some kind of plan. If somebody wants to contest them, sure, you know, that's fine, too, which we may end up with a few people saying, "Hey, I don't owe this," and that's fine, too, but it's, the onus is on us to try our efforts to try and collect that money as well. So until it goes away, I think we need to take a look at what our process is, and speaking with Mr. Laddie, I think, you know, some other municipalities have set it at, you know, that threshold at $250, and, you know, we sent out a couple of letters, and then we go from there, but.
Yeah, I'd be happy to just outline it for you to take a look at and give you the threshold, and then the percentages that we had there, and then the hard costs, so you can evaluate it.
Okay.
And the last thing about personal property that, from my standpoint, is this is the one amount of tax that, again, is created by the legislature. That's 100% yours. You're not sending 85% of it down to some other entity. And so while it's there, and while we have the obligation to correct, to collect it, we may as well make an economically efficient effort.
Right. Okay, we'd appreciate that if you could outline what you think, David, might work. Anything else? Okay, next item B, under new business, the board will consider a motion accepting the low bid recommendation from the Genesee County Road Commission from Fonson Company, Inc., and authorizing the superintendent to approve moving the project forward for Phase 3 of the Balden Road Upgrade Project. Mr. Limina?
So we need to authorize the road commission to go ahead and move forward with the project. We don't really open the bids or award the bids. It's really has to do with the Genesee County Road Commission. They own the roads, they go through all this. The bid tabulations came in, and they were slightly higher. So the reason we have to authorize it is because this is the segment of the road where a little over $1.7 million is being covered by the feds, and then the Grand Lake Township DDA is going to make good on the remainder. That engineer's estimate came in for that section at $920,000. If you recall, the Phase 2 section before that we did this, that came in right on the engineer's estimates. We were optimistic that this one would as well. They received a total of four bids. The engineer's estimate for the whole project, including the federal portion and then the Grand Lake Township's portion, the engineer's estimate was $2.6 million. The bids came in at $3,590,000, up to $3.6 million, nearly $3.7 million. The low bidder was Fonson Company. That is who the Genesee County Road Commission selected as a low bidder, and they need us just to authorize. They were considering it today. I told them that I would get this to them out tonight or tomorrow if the board authorizes us to move forward. My recommendation clearly is to move forward. We continue to work through the bonding process. All the information has been out to the municipal finance consultants, as well as bond council at the $4 million project to move forward. I think I told last time that the estimate that we put together for the DDA is somewhere between $9 and $16 million, depending on how fast the build-out goes. Just with the build-out we have right now, we expect in a 10-year time that they will return $9 million in revenue through the DDA TIF capture, so they can easily afford the $4 million to repay these bonds. And it was disappointing that it was $250,000 more than we had anticipated, but over the course of this entire project, you know, we're spending $5.5 million and, you know, or more, and I think, not to be anticipated, I just need a motion from the board authorizing the township's participation, continue participation in the project.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Support by Dr. Raridan.
Supported by Raridan?
Yes. I just will say that there is lots of interest in other property along there that Mr. Limina are aware of, that we may.
that Mr. Limida are aware of, that we may have some movement on very soon as well. So we're well aware of some property, that there's some signatures that have been, that have signed for some things. And so we're excited that there's some things coming, in addition to what's already being built and being planned. So.
Shall I do the role, Mr. Supervisor?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Reridan?
Yes.
Trustee Feig?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item C, the board will consider approval of Resolution 22-16 for traffic control on the route for the Bikes on the Bricks event. Mr. Limida?
Yes, they're at, you know, normally we see these things come through for the road commission when they're doing like a road race, for example. They're going to close a section of the streets for, you know, a runner's race or whatever. This is actually a little bit different, although we have to pass this resolution every year. The Bikes on the Bricks is going to be motorcycle ride that's coming through in celebration of, you know, Back to the Bricks. They actually, for our township, they're going to come up Fenton Road to Maple, Maple to Saginaw. The reason that we have to pass the resolution is because the bikes will ride ahead and close those intersections while the riders come through for safety purposes. So it's not really closing a road. So it's a little bit unusual, but the road commission requires the exact same resolution and application form. So you're just being asked to adopt the resolution so that the event organizers of Bikes on the Bricks, Attorney Laddie did provide in our format the resolution. It wasn't in your packet. It came later, I think. Did you have a copy for Dave to sign?
I have a copy, Mr. Supervisor.
So we have, if the board agrees, again, not really much of an impact, other than a brief motorcycle rally driving through on the very outskirts of the township.
Okay.
Is motion in order?
Mr. White.
Mr. White makes the motion.
Supported by Ms. Hugo.
Supported by Hugo. Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Feig?
Yes.
Trustee Reridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item D under new business, the board will consider a motion authorizing the supervisor and clerk to approve an employment agreement with Danielle Harrington for the position of Director of Assessing. Mr. Limida?
Mr. Supervisor, we had, at the last meeting, discussed in an executive session about the ability to negotiate. And we talked a little bit about the changes to our assessing department. We had the, one employee who left us recently. We're doing very well in conducting the interviews on bringing some more people in. But one of the things that came about is that, as you know, we have to use somebody who has a level for assessing certification to sign our tax rule. And we currently do not have an employee who has that. Danielle Harrington is signed up for the program. It will start in October, expect to be completed in about 12 months. In the meantime, we need a little bit of a different structure as far as providing the day-to-day supervision. I did have met with the union. Danielle is leaving the Asme Chapter V group to accept the position as the assessing department director. I did negotiate with her an annual wage of $82,000, plus the standard benefits that everybody has. The employment agreement is not any different than the employment agreements of all the other independent contracted employees that we employ, with the one change being the fact that because Danielle was in the union, she qualified for retiree healthcare benefits, unlike the other independents. We, this is not unusual. It's the same thing we kept in Chief Wiles' agreement when he came over, the former assessing director, and with our former IT director, still here in a different role, Robbie Baller. So those who were longtime employees and left the union, who were already qualified for the retiree healthcare, we wrote that into their agreements. That's the only change in the agreement, the difference in the agreement between this and any of the other agreements that we have. All the other benefits stay the same, and they follow the standard benefit format that we have.
Any questions, concerns?
Is a motion in order, Mr. Supervisor?
It is.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Supported by Ms. Hugo.
Oh, very good. Trustee Reridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Feig?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you. Future agenda items. What do you want to tackle first, Mr. Limida, you think?
I am, I haven't given a lot of thought to it. Like I said, I was, we're in the middle of our budget process, and that has necessitated my full focus and attention primarily. You know, and then I hammered this one out for review. And then moving forward, I think we have to highlight some of the things that are going to come before you, namely our continued progress on the campus building projects. And then I think we, you know, one of the things that we uncovered in our discussion is that we kind of got pushed on a back burner, our discussion about our potential business licensing program. We need to move on that. And then we need to get moving on our north end if we're going to create that TIF district, if that's still the board's desire, to flesh that out and be prepared to move that forward. And certainly, we can work with Attorney Laddie on preparing the particulars around that.
You mean Point North?
Point North.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I said, did he mean Point North?
Yes.
Yes.
Point North, yes.
Yes. Okay, board reports. Anything, Ms. Hugo, if you're planning to comment?
No.
Okay. Mr. White, anything with ZBA?
Nothing.
Mr. Feig, anything Metro Alliance?
Not tonight, no.
Okay. Mr. Kilmer, or I'm sorry, Dr. Reridan? Okay. Mr. Kilmer?
We've pretty much covered what we need to. I guess the only thing I would like to stress is that at some point in the near future, we need to come up with this threshold.
Yeah. Well, we're going to ask Mr. Laddie to come up with an outline kind of of what he's seen work in other municipalities. Clerk Robertson?
Nothing to report, sir.
Okay. The election went smoothly, and.
Very nicely, yes.
Yeah. So just real briefly, I copied or sent you to all the board members a copy of the letter that I sent to the 911 Consortium Director, Director Jones. He replied and said that he will get us the information that we requested. We have a committee that is looking at this and will continue to look into this further. In terms of development, you know, one of the things I mentioned was the continued development down on Baldwin Road. But really, we've got interest in multiple areas of the township. And one of the things that's, you know, very impressive is, just earlier today, we had somebody here that was telling us about some municipalities that you would think would be very aggressive on development, you know, that are in south of us. But they tell us that we're much more forward-thinking, and we act much quicker and adeptly. When a developer has a project, they want to move the thing. They don't want to say, well, you know, 16 months from now, we might be able to get this through. But we heard today that, hey, we really step up, you know, to the plate when it's time to bat. And I think that's one of the things that's helping us to get the development, is that Mr. Limida and his team here step up to the plate when somebody comes in. And I see that. So there's, it's great. We've got some exciting things that are, that are being proposed in a couple of different areas of the township. And I think in the next few months, you'll probably start to hear about some of them. So some really good stuff.
So we are progressive?
In that sense, we are.
Okay.
The, so with regard, the other thing that, just a couple of things, just to let you know, the kind of things I hear about, you know, because I, sometimes I'm the chief complaint receiver here, right? And I don't know who to call. But, you know, one of the things we talked about was the business license. But, you know, people calling, hey, can I buy a house in Grand Lake and rent it out? So people already have their antennas up when they think about buying a rental property here in Grand Lake Township. And it's, you know, you can buy a house and rent it here, you know. And then what about vacation rentals? You would think, you know, some people may think, why would somebody want a vacation rental in Grand Lake Township? But believe me, you'd be surprised by the Airbnb or VRBO type rentals that are popping up. There's some newer homes that actually are being committed to that, from what I'm seeing. So just, you know, things to be aware of that are happening around us. But it's a whole new world, right? So, okay, with that, Mr. Laddie?
Just real briefly, primarily to you and Clerk Robertson, I'm going to go back to my office and amend that resolution. I left a leg out of the bikers in Bricks route. So I'll go back and amend that. I'll have you a clean copy for your signature tomorrow morning.
Very good.
Good. Okay. Mr. Limida?
I mentioned the budget briefly. Today, we completed the official department conferences. So, you know, the process went out, started really back at the end of June. We start compiling information, goes out to all the department heads. They start pulling their budgets together and their requests. And we sit down with every single department and have them walk us through their budget and their requests. We've completed those today. We're ahead of schedule a little bit. We tried to move it up as opposed, because it's such a crunch at the end. We are mandated by law to have it to the board, an electronic copy to the board, no later than September 1st every year. We are absolutely on track to getting that to you. Kathy and I will sit down on next Monday for a preliminary walkthrough, now that we've done all of the individual departments. I still have some to revisit, to go back and take a look at some requests I've asked them to change in some of their budget requests. Again, it's tougher. And, you know, when you think that we took on Parks and Recreation, for example, and we used to contribute between the city and the township about $300,000. We, you know, of course, we took it over right when COVID hit. They couldn't run programs and generate their own income. Those have not come fully back. You know, a big contingent of that was like on swimming through the high school. And, you know, we weren't able to do some of those programs. So it's, we thought 2020 was going to be that base year, establish that baseline, and then move forward. Well, we haven't really established that baseline for Parks and Recreation yet. They're a great team. They've worked hard. They've done a lot of really good community events. But it's challenging, and everybody's aware of the labor market and how challenging the labor market is. But we continue to face those. We're putting it together. I feel very confident in the direction we're heading. If there's any questions going up to it, but I will tell you that it looks to me like we will have those two U, maybe even before September 1st, to start to review the DPW budget. I'm trying to get out at the same time. It's not mandated by law for enterprise funds to have it out. If we can, we will. But right now, the way the work, the schedule is, is again, you guys get it on September 1st. We'll start in October sometime to do a department review with the idea that we could hold the public hearing on the tax levy November 15th, and maybe adopt the budget by November 29th. That still gives you until December 31st, really, if you need to adopt a budget, if you need more time, or you want to look at something. Until I get them all together and then look at the capital requests that they've made, I can't really tell you. I can tell you that it will be a balanced budget. Not everybody's going to get the requests that they've asked for. There's been a couple of requests for additional personnel, one for the police department. We're going to body cams. I don't know if you guys realize how many FOIA requests go through the police department. Is it something like 800 a year at this point, Chief? And when we have the body cams up and fully operational, I shudder to think what that number will be. It's also incredibly time-consuming. You have to go through the software, go through all the redaction. You have to remove any identifying information. You got to blur faces, blur data. It's going to be very time-consuming. So I think we're, you know, it's just a sign of the times. I'm positive that it will be a positive influence to protect our officers from any claims of malfeasance or misdoing, if we've got the body cams there. But it comes at a cost, and we're going to end up probably bringing on personnel just to deal with FOIA requests moving forward. A couple of others that we are considering, potentially in the finance department as well, just with the personnel we have and where we're at. So that conversation is ongoing. But primarily, we're trying to maintenance budget. We're still, the same thing we've done since I've been here, is to try to, you know, not add a lot of personnel. But sometimes it just necessitates, we're 40,000 people now. Our calls for service are way up from what they were. And, you know, I'm still happy to report that we actually have more revenue. You know, we finally hit it March of 2021, back to the 2007 levels. But man, if you think about the population and the calls to service and those increases. But I feel good about where we're heading in the budget. And you'll have it on September 1st. If you have any questions about the process, just call me or email me or let me know.
You know, that increased development also means increased, you know, call volume, service calls, what have you. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Limida. Okay, with that, I think.
Is motion to adjourn in order, Mr. Supervisor?
It is. It's a bit early. Does everybody think we should wrap up?
Well, there's nothing else on the agenda.
Okay. I think this is one of our shorter meetings, but.
Well, because we're efficient.
I know boards passed, maybe even canceled the meeting during the summer. But this board's dedicated, and we're meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:47 PM.
Nice.